I'm not finding the car.
Good. Call this regular meeting of the Southwest Lincoln Board of Education to order. It is May twenty first at seven P M in the Board of Education meeting room. Like to recognize our visitors, both here and online. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mister Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mister Vincent.
Here.
Mister Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. Do not have any public participation this evening as we are maintaining an under ten. For the governor's orders, which I do believe may have actually been lifted late this afternoon. I believe, right?
But not the ten.
Not the ten still? Okay.
Unless you're having a wedding.
Unless we're having a wedding, which we're not, so never mind. But no dancing, right?
No dancing.
Alright, so we're still under ten and that's why we have no public participation today. We have an adoption of agenda. I believe Mister Jones wants us to add one item to that agenda.
Yes, this is a resolution regarding easements related to the widening of state around the forty or turn lanes for new facilities. If you had this eight G, that'd be good.
I move to approve the agenda with the addition of this resolution under eight G. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Mister Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That passes. We can continue. We need a motion to approve the minutes from April sixteenth, regular meeting.
Motion approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Mister Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That passes. We have a three A, a report from the treasurer. We can get a motion to approve. We can then discuss that.
Motion approval.
Second.
Right, Mister Jones.
You have the executive summary for the month, executive summary for the month end of April two thirty of two thousand twenty. Fairly routine month. Our final income tax settlement came in for the month, which been December to February. It actually came in higher than we anticipated. So year-to-date, we're actually within six thousand dollars, sixty-seven hundred where we estimate for the budget, so it came in very close. The only thing we didn't receive is we were expecting our homestead rollback settlement from Lincoln County. That's actually for Lincoln County but from O D. That did not come in April. We were expecting to receive in May. So I still expect to receive that amount of money, but just as we didn't get it when we anticipated. Everything else was fairly routine from the black answering questions you have. We're very close. We're within zero and zero on year-to-date expenditures and receipts.
How about, I know that there are JUDs payments. Have those come in?
We just got those again this week.
Okay.
The fourth quarter and the first quarter.
I thought I saw that those have been processed, so, okay.
And I believe the operating levy was certified today?
Yes, I got a copy of that email from the board of election.
Thank you, voters.
Absolutely. Alright, any questions for Mister Jones? Alright, Mister Jones.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Miss Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. Alright, we need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of employment of public employee.
So moved. Second.
Alright, Mister Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Miss Engel.
Yes. We are in executive session at seven oh five. We are back from executive session at seven twenty-nine. Mister Jones, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mister Vincent.
Here.
Mister Zani.
Here.
Miss Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. We have agenda item number five, personnel consent calendar, A through J. We need a motion to approve one or all of those.
Motion approval, A through J.
Second. Any discussion? Alright, Mister Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Miss Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. Alright, we have agenda item six, A through C.
Motion six, approval six A.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Mister Jones.
Mister Jones.
Well, this is a recommendation. It's basically a resolution that points me, gives me authority to nominate the athletic director if there's a conflict with Doctor Perkins by law. So, you know, based on the recommendation of the coaches committee and based on the recommendation of the community committee, I hereby nominate Jacob Perkins as our new athletic director. The effective August first, two thousand and twenty. And then I also recommend fifteen, up to fifteen days extended time as needed prior to August first to get things in shape prior to his first start, first day of start.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, Mister Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Miss Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Alright. Sorry.
Point of order. But did they have just motion to approve six A?
Yeah, that's all we approved. It was a resolution.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so we have six B.
We did B and C together.
B and C.
Motion approval B, six B and C.
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
So if approved, who will be Mister Perkins' supervisor?
The high school principal. He has directed the classroom.
And if there was any conflict?
The high school principal can come to me and I can escalate it up to the board if I need to, if there's any issues with that.
Wonderful.
At athletics.
Perfect. Alright, thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank the community, the community members who helped out and the coaches and the high school administration for doing the search. Thank you.
Maybe truly believe we got the best candidate.
Thank you very much. Alright, Mister Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. Number seven, we have, let's see, we can do A and B, policies together? Yes.
Motion to approve seven A and B. Second.
Any discussion?
One thing that was added that was not brought before the policy committee was basics and procedures, non-scribination policy procedures and a complaint form that basically it was suggesting we put in place per the report. That's a issue for that we kind of lack these things that we need to put these in place. These are drafted by our attorney, Dan Gashen, that we need against this, we first read to put these basically procedures for people to report non-scribination, and harassment that's not related to section, I think that's what it's called, so, an actual complaint form, so.
Is this something that you can find on, will be something that you can find on the website after the?
Yes, well, we will number it accordingly on basically website. It'll be like a regulation.
Perfect. Okay.
It's all yours. I got an extra.
Alright, any other questions? Mister Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Miss Engel.
Yes. Alright, that motion passes. Oh, about a motion for seven C, proposal for fifth grade camp for the twenty twenty-one school year. I think it was crossed.
Motion to approve six C. I mean, seven C.
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
I just remember to pay for my son.
Just to let you guys know, we do have this reserve September, but we also have a backup date.
Good.
Wonderful.
We have to let them know by in the fall at a certain time. We have reminders on our calendar for that. So if we're not able to go in that capacity, hopefully we'll be able to go.
Wonderful, okay.
It's a rite of passage.
It is.
So that's why we make sure to get a second, a backup date.
Wonderful.
We'll have to do that.
Alright, Mister Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. Seven D, school buses.
Motion to approve seven D. Second.
Alright, Mister Jones, you want to?
Sure. Fairly partly, we've basically, for a while now, our, our transportation director has requested the purchase of six school buses for this coming school year. So this has been an issue for a while. So if you remember, part of our recent just COPS bond issue, we include money to purchase four school buses. And then the other two will be purchased after July first with the permanent improvement money. So we do actually have to have the money now for the four that we can use to pay with the certificate participation debt issues. And then after July first, so we're doing five seventy-two passenger buses and then one sixty-six passenger accessible, handicap accessible bus. That's less than additional road change spaces. So this is his recommendation. He asked the board to approve it from Cardinal Business Sales and Service. And this is based on pricing sent, submitted to M V C, or now it's Meta. They do a large bid, bus bids for all much schools. And this is off their pricing, which is why we don't have to do ourselves. It's already been bid out from their pricing.
Do we know how many were actually retiring and getting rid of?
I'm hoping we're doing six.
Okay.
I don't know that for sure, but soon. We don't want to keep extra buses on because I think, I believe it's the one six or not, won't pass inspection.
Right.
So we need to get them out and get six more. So obviously I don't want to pay on insurance on buses. My push would be to get all six of them out to order.
Alright. Mister Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That passes. We have seven E and abatement.
Motion approval of seven E.
Second.
This is a part of the fun today. So basically, this is a request from Core Five, who is a, basically a developer who wants to build, I think approximately four hundred and twenty thousand square feet warehouse right on forty and basic, at the core park, right near, I think I should put a copy in maps. It's right off forty right there, right before you get to at the core park, it's a big old field. I think it's approximately thirty acres, I think. So they will build about four hundred thousand square foot basic warehouse. You know, so same as we have with Prologis and C R G. One thing we were able to get with this one is we do get a share of the jet income tax. And basically, we've been pushing for a while, but we finally got up to where we were way back in the beginning, is we're getting thirty percent of the jet income tax for not less than thirty years. In addition, the basic Core Five will pay disclosure one half cents for at least a square foot annual payment for all fifteen years. It's probably around six to eight thousand a year. And also, they're giving us ten thousand dollars or paying ten thousand dollars towards our legal fees we incurred to get this all done. One of the other things that we kind of committed to is to have a conversation with Edetownship to see if we can get something in place similar to what we did with the same task. We're obviously not committing to doing anything particularly, but we want to sell, we want to talk to them. We'll see if we can get everything put together or not, but it's not, that conversation is not contingent on this, this payment. But we had some, Deb and John and I had some conversations today with the developer and some attorneys and said that we would be, we would commit to staying down and talking to Edetownship to see if there's anything we can do about it. Get an agreement, we'll have to get something moving forward. And we've been pushing to get to this thirty percent because we got it way back of jet Z one. We've been pushing to get back up to it. This is where we've always wanted to be. So we're not looking for more. But I think Ed has a little bit more assurance that we're not going to be pushing for more, but that's something we have talked about as a, basically as a committee to meet with Ed and then come back with some eventual possible recommendations to the board if we can get some kind of agreement. So my recommendation is asking the board to approve this abatement. It's a hundred percent for fifteen years. And they will have a second one coming up sometime. They're going to do another one on M I G T. That one's larger. It's like six hundred thousand. But this one's only the South Gate location, about four hundred thousand square feet.
What I reading, it's much improved, one of us this morning, so.
Yes, yeah, it is. Much improved.
Alright.
Any questions or anything?
And this does not lock us in to the long-term anything, correct?
Yeah, basically, we, we said that we weren't sure, that we wanted to lock in at all, just because, well, first of all, we've, we've had some dealings with Edetownship where we were in agreement that weren't favorable to the school district. So I, I, you know, my thought is perhaps we should work on those as they were originally presented to the school district. And then perhaps we can move forward. But we also don't want to restrict any future board members.
Right.
Right. That was my biggest issue, was making decisions for future boards. You don't know what the finances are going to be then.
Correct, okay. Perfect. Alright, yep.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mister Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mister Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Alright, that motion passes.
This next one's going to take a little longer.
Okay.
About these things dealing with a construction project, so we're actually Zooming in, Karen Miller.
Okay.
And John Ritter, who's our technology specialist, is actually going to do some presentations to the boards so you understand each one of these items and what we're asking the board to approve. I need to start that meeting. I haven't started yet, so. Actually, Justice member, so Jessica Barrett present up there.
Will it be on these computers? It won't be?
No, it should be up there, sorry.
I'm the only one.
Are you on Jeff? Let's see. There's lots of people on this one. Eric's on, Kirk's out also.
Yes, this is John Ritter.
I think we should judge who has the best background.
Yeah, I'm going first to be on that screen, so.
I have a switch, I have a switch on that screen, so once he's, once we're set up, I'll switch it right now.
Eric, can you hear us?
I sure can. Can you hear me?
I can't hear Eric.
Eric, are you muted still?
No, he's unmuted himself. One second, Eric.
Can you hear me now?
Right now. Can you hear us, Eric?
Can you try and get Eric?
I can hear you.
Oh, yeah, excellent. Good. John, can you hear us?
John's muted still.
Yeah, John's still muted.
Uh, how about now?
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Alright, can you switch to the screen?
Yeah, let me see, figure out how to get, thank John, the host. Make host, okay. So John, you are now the host, and now you can share your screen and do your presentation, whatever you need to do.
Okay, uh, well, you know, as I understood it, the, the big thing was kind of going through a quick overview of the E-rate proposal on the fiber ring and what the, you know, and please, John, if you have a question at any point. The whole purpose is to answer any questions you're concerned with.
Yeah, John, I'd love you to see the, our agenda, I don't think so, but the first two items on the D C power plant and the wireless network infrastructure, can you touch on those, please, first? And then we'll move on to fiber.
I have a presentation, but.
Look, you don't have to, just to talk about them.
Okay, the D C power plant and the, and the wireless, first of all, yeah, one of the primary objectives of E-rating, those two items, were to help the district to pay federal funding for a large percentage, I believe, we imagine seventy percent, right?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent. Try to get federal funding for sixty percent of the power plant for the network equipment and sixty percent of the cost of the Wi-Fi equipment of buildings to alleviate any budget concerns or some of the budget concerns on the technology. But basically, we're receiving some dollars from the U S A programs to help offset the cost of the district, but it's extremely expensive on its direct. But, you know, we're, we're basically being helped, you know, Southwest Lincoln put together a proposal to get federal government to co-fund to seventy percent. And then the remaining thirty percent would be reimbursed through the OFC C product. So the big savings, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars really.
Actually, a bit.
Still ends up with an internet product at the end that they would have had it just been bid through the standard OFC C process.
One second, I just, the OFC C did accept, I mean, Robson did go out and get bids prior to us starting this process. And actually, the price that we got through the bidding through E-rate for the wireless network was actually significantly cheaper than the actual low bid that Robson got for the exact same stuff. So on top of getting a lower price, if they approve it, they're also going to pay sixty percent of the cost. We haven't talked about it, technology budgets opens over budget, technology parts over budget. We've got it down. This is one of the things, how we got down closer to budget, is to allow us to do these things. The D C power plant, if I'm correct, that's what's basically a battery backup for the network stuff, is that correct?
Um, right, yeah. Yeah, the D C power plant, the network equipment that is actually providing the give you all the, the little network ports for all the devices to plug into are powered by a forty-eight volt direct current power plant. And when we call it a D C power plant, when, when the D C power plant is there to get supervised, that must be efficient, the method of power and electric equipment. And the, you know, we went through, and I apologize, I didn't come, I, I can bring it up, but we actually did approve for American Electric Power, which is your provider, that, yeah, our, our methodology will result in a thirteen to twenty percent reduction in your electric bill due to technology for the lighting system. So, you know, the D C power plants are just a component that we were able to pull out and get subsidized by the federal government. It was, again, the original project, but again, we were looking for pieces that we could pull out that could be independently bid and not interfere with the flow of the OFC C product.
Do you have any question about those two things?
Did you, did you go out for a bid on the D C power plant, too?
Yes, Robson both did.
And they were?
I can't remember that one. I think it was pretty close to what Robson got. I think the same company got it and it got to Robson. This in fact was a different company got it who had bid it for Robson, the wireless part of it.
Okay.
I think the D C was about the same.
We basically had responses from Verdi, which used to be Levered, which is there in Columbus. And also from Eltec, which is a number manufacturer that's bid D C power plants. And the price, actually, from my perspective, was shocking. Yeah, we normally budget twenty-five thousand for a D C power plant. And on these two projects, we had four, and we were way ahead of that. But the D C power plant, which, yeah, I mean, again, from my perspective, achieving budget goals is shocking. Through the E-rate.
So any question about those two concerns? The fiber ring's a big one, that's why I really wanted one here, but I thought I might as well here to talk about that, too. So if you want to go into the fiber ring, John, I appreciate it. Is that a fake background, Eric, or?
Yeah, I don't have any makeup that fancy. I can't make myself get that, I don't look very good on the screen.
I don't either, but Eric looked wonderful.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yep, I can, I can see it.
Yep.
You know, basically, what I'm going to run through is a subset of the presentation I did originally for the district. You have regarded why it would be a good idea to look at the fiber and why they're in there. And, and like I said, please jump in. Let me know if there's anything you'd like to hear. You know, the big thing is, we're wanting to share resources. When the district puts in a lot of these expensive platforms, you know, CCTV recorders, servers, control meters, blocks, access control. The default in the state, with the state of Ohio, that you're going to put every one of these platforms in each of your buildings that we either build or renovate. Our plan, and, and it's kind of the building block of the, is the value, is that we would only set up two buildings to do this. And so we only have two buildings with all these active systems. So we have basically two optical line terminals, that's the center of your network. And two redundant, meaning they're like load sharing setup where one, you know, they, they basically have a pair of core network switches at these two buildings. And then you'd have a telephone gateway and all, and all your central stuff at only two buildings. Instead of, fully replicated at every building, which is the norm. It enables the district to have a single passive optical network, passive, that's what we're going to talk about a little bit. By using this, this dark fiber ring, there's no active electronics that release this information from a building. there's no active electronics that leaves this information from building to building. It, it actually is just light moving around through, uh, components that are not powered, only at the endpoints if you have. Okay, another thing we save money on, to save money for the district, is that instead of having a link from every building back to Laka for internet and email and connectivity, there's only going to be one for main, main building, which would be at four, five, and, uh, the master sites, any upgrades you do there are going to cost at all your sites. It's got less energy consumption, uh, we, we, we've proven mathematically and to even your electric provider, that there's incredible energy efficiency, uh, from this architecture. Simplify maintenance, I mean, there's not a bunch of electronics and servers and equipment in every building. There's only equipment at two buildings, uh, safety funding there. There's no single point of failure, so, you know, something happened at four, five, the power went out a long time, generating the start, uh, we still have the other site, we have, uh, heating things up and running, uh, for all the other buildings. Uh, the fiber line area network, that's what, uh, I'm sorry, that's what the plan is showing. Basically, it has unlimited capacity, uh, and we'll talk briefly about the difference between dark and the fiber a little bit further. All buildings, this is a big deal, uh, when, you know, when you have a building to spread out, uh, district, and you have a lot of buildings, uh, there's always a port, and if you want to call it that. And, and in this architecture, there's not going to be a portman as far as network quality and quality of service, isn't it? They're all going to be identical, all these things. I'm going to show you a picture of what we have today. This is what we have today, and, and I pardon, pardon me, I charted that you're renting lit fiber services from, you know, basically your, your main office or your high school blockings, uh, existing high school. And then it's pointing back to Laka and then out to all the other buildings. And if you notice the speed of this, a lot of this is not particularly faster than what you might even be giving at home. You know, that, they are dedicated and with, uh, but they're, they're quite, uh, quite slow and they, they cause quality of service issues with your telephone system, with uploading to internet, you name it. What's being provided, what's being proposed with the fiber ring is, again, the center of your network is going to be the four, five, right down here. You see my mouse circling, and that. And then there'll be a high capacity internet and then through Laka to the internet. We maintain a link to the existing middle school through, uh, its usage until it's done. But the rest of this has got a direct fiber link back to these four systems. So, you know, you know, basically, no matter what happens, uh, you'll have a fiber link, a direct to each of these other buildings, with the past, like the Kirkersville, uh, Edna, Board Office, the new high school, the Watkins, soon be another school, uh, and the new four, five. So, you know, and there, if you notice, we, in the project, we have a, a fiber built in. And then, uh, the fiber ring project that we get in Watkins Middle School, go around Kirkersville, around the pass, uh, back to Edna and back to, uh, I'll drop to the Board Office and the back to the high school right here. That's the end of it, and that's the part that we rented, uh, leased through the E-Rate, uh, project. And what that means is, like, say, this high school quit working, dynamicating, all these other buildings would be the other way around to Edna. If something happened to Edna, all these other buildings will dynamicate, revert, and be served by four, five. And if you notice, since we got these redundant links right here, back to Laka, you'd never lose internet connectivity. You'd never lose connectivity, uh, from building to building. You know, the worst you're going to have is a lot of loss of, uh, one builder's network, uh, helping to prioritize that stuff there. And, and remember, the only thing that can be capitalized is that, that can fail is either at four, five. Sorry, I have to follow up with that. There, four, five, and Edna. That's where all your, that's where all your, your servers, your, uh, CCTV recorders, your phone system, everything kind of resides in that. Okay, and, uh, the decision and proposal before you is a, is a leased, stressed, irritable, dark fiber network. You know, it's a valid option not to build it, but what the problem is, is that, uh, the capital costs didn't want to put all that equipment into those other buildings, you know, for, if the ring isn't built. Every time you want to increase the speed in one of those buildings, if you don't have your fiber, then you've got to pay more, there's always going to increase the price to increase the speed a little bit. This is something I had to share, uh, my original, uh, cost of investment for seventeen thousand. That's how far it is including all your subs. I thought it would be between seven hundred thousand and I never figured that out. And, you know, and basically, this would be the others, uh, share in the E-Rate scenario. But nationality, and Rick shared this, it, it far above that, couldn't believe, like, I almost thought it was a given. Yeah, so it'd be actually non-recurring charges. And these amortized costs, uh, you know, the big thing is, is you've got to eliminate all those lacking boats we saw earlier that we have to have, uh, from every building back to Laka. You, you can get rid of all those that we're paying lots of charges for, uh, except for the two from your primary sites. You're going to eliminate, uh, elements that may have central equipment, board switches, optional line terminals, network video recorders or CCTV, wifi controllers, infrastructure, racks, uh, and rack, and harnesses, which is, that's hanging off the racks, and that, uh, four buildings. So it's going to save, can, uh, tire design of two hundred thousand dollars, just in technicals in your OFCC. Because you'd only need all that big stuff in your two primary sites. Uh, energy savings, this is something that I know should be a big deal, is that every temporary, uh, both the decision of the district made for a passive optical network and fiber, we basically are going to only have one temporary in every building. So every temporary we get rid of, uh, you know, we don't need all of that complex equipment. You're going to save five kilowatts of load for each of those four buildings, seven twenty four, ten cents kilowatt hour. That's seventeen thousand five hundred twenty dollars, and perhaps savings on your electric bill. And three, weird. So, it's just a decision to look at fibering, it's going to result in huge savings on your electric bill if you don't have all this replicated. Uh, another thing, if, uh, if there is an, uh, if the district has to buy support maintenance only equipment, most equipment has like a fifteen percent annual support charge on an expiration warranty. And that's like forty four thousand dollars a year, or that much. And, and you would have wasted the majority of that. And I'm not finished, so I promise, I don't want to hurt anybody. The, uh, wide area network, you know, a single dark, single load fiber has the ability to increase at one terabit per second per strand. If you buy a lit fiber, you know, it's fiber alright, but it has a fixed capacity. And if you want to make it do more, you've got to make more money. With a dark fiber, it's defined by the equipment that you, the owner, decide to put on end them. So a dark fiber could be a hundred megabits per second, like your home internet. Or it can be a terabit per second if you put that kind of equipment in the end of it. So it's really defined by what you, the owner, put on the end of it. Another thing I think's a big deal is no building left behind. Every building is going to have people, levels of service. So, you know, Kirkersville is never going to be, you know, if you will, an head stepchild or a passa. Everybody's going to have the same level of service. Survivability, you won't have a real single point of better in your network. That it's pretty much cost neutral, once you look into what all the charges are for lit fiber and, uh, and what your charges are for dark fiber network. But once you actually have repaid those, uh, non-recurring charges, you know, the energy savings and support payment savings is found money in your budget. Any questions on all of that, Eric?
I, I actually have one question.
I need you to understand, this is above us, so I need you to understand.
My only question is, is Etna the appropriate place based a- and in keeping it? I know that we're going to be working a lot on our moisture, but we're still sitting on a swamp.
Yes, uh.
Yeah, does that matter?
Etna was only, was selected, and based on, uh, honestly, the, it's the timing, uh, uh, Etna and the master plan, uh, you know, we, we needed it sooner rather than later to support all the other buildings.
And, and correctly from what I'm, if several years down the road, we decide to do it, that we can always move where we have a hub. Like, we can move to the Casco, for example, and just move the equipment over there and, and then the Casco, and the four, five, and the R two, those, am I correct?
I apologize, I didn't quite hear all of that.
Well, Jeff was asking if, uh, can we move the hub if we want to in the future? So we just move the equipment from Batasca, like to Kirkersville, I mean, from Edna to, like, the Taster, uh, and then Batasca and the four, five can be the hub, is that correct? Can we do that?
Uh, I mean, you would have to work the Crown Castle and that, I mean, right now, uh, if you look at what the, uh, fibers is, what the leases are, they're bringing, uh, all the backup fibers, all the other sites to Edna and four, five.
Should have discussed.
So to move that, it would be, they may have the fiber, and I believe they do, uh, they can, I can't speak for them on that, on that front, because they would actually be physically building facilities. So there would actually be a lot of fibers coming in and out of four, five, a lot of fiber coming in and out of, of Etna. And the fiber cables going into the other building, buildings would be much smaller.
So I, I go, I go back to my original question, knowing that Etna is, is really, really wet, basically on a swamp, is that the best placement, and will it do any damage to the equipment?
Uh, and, and I mean, we can give some consideration, the, the central core equipment is actually quite small, uh, as far as the optical network. The other button is a little bit bigger, about the only cost share thing, I guess, I could put together is a rack and critical illness higher, uh, off the floor. Because we've done that, uh, where we put, you know, like, everything free feet off the floor, that was, was critical, mission critical. So, you know, I mean, my, my issue again, as a designer, was I had to look at a building, and the building would be ready for what you want.
And if I could comment on that, Deb, I don't believe there will be any issue. I mean, one of the, the main, uh, part of the renovation to Edna is, uh, renovating the HVAC system to address humidity and moisture issues. But we're confident that, that the HVAC, uh, will protect the equipment, that we won't have that humidity built up and moisture issue that you're experiencing now.
And we're the, we're the, uh, we're the computer room also has its own individual HVAC unit? That we're also helping to use on top of that?
Yeah, that, it will have a dedicated, uh, HVAC unit that, uh, that will help as well to keep the humidity levels controlled.
I'm going to say it turns by it, uh, and, and technology is right there. But, you know, and the other thing is, because we only really have, uh, again, because of the decision of the district to go to the passive optical network, there's really only one tech room in the building. And, and, uh, we, we really focus our efforts on, on making sure that single rig is, is as hard as we can make it.
So the, rather than, so the concept of the fiber ring, this is what John said, basically, it's, it's really unlimited fiber between the buildings. Uh, really, the limit is to the internet, yeah, go ahead, John.
Oh, I'm just going to say the, the last thing I wanted to add, I have to tell you, I had a slide on that, is that dark fiber is such a great deal in, in, it's affordable, which in this case is probably one of the best deals I've seen. You know, because it, it's as big as you can find it. You're not going out to somebody and saying, I need a hundred megabits, I need a gigabit per second. I need the speed without speed. Speed is really defined by the equipment that the district chooses to put on the end of it. So when we, when we, for example, like, we're, uh, you know, let's say Kirkersville, uh, on day one, they're going to have upwards of forty gigabits per second of bandwidth compared to, you know, the hundred they have today, hundred megabits. So, you know, we're, we're talking about many orders of magnitude, more capacity that go out between Kirkersville and your main central servers and, but the phone system we're getting. And that'll be true for all the other sites. We're likely to be talking about the, uh, Watkins High School slash Middle School to be. We're likely to be talking about the Watkins High School slash middle school to be or uh, the Casco or, you know, Union Board Office. That that would be speeds and and they available to maintain like excellent quality of service. Are really weighted on and and would be achieved by renting facilities. So that that that's probably, I think it's a bump for dark fiber. I feel we're really fortunate finding somebody who's willing to build dark fiber and then then conquer that current reason for cost to the district. I'm sure, I mean, they all have their own territory, but there's uh, growth in your area, there's product problem here. And and uh, and said, hey, it makes sense to build dark fiber there and sell the parts of it to somebody else. But there's no reason not to take advantage of that.
Do you have any more questions for John? I think that's everything we had, John, we do appreciate your your time, thank you Eric and Kurt, and uh, we appreciate being on and helping us uh, with making this decision.
Yeah, thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks everybody, nice seeing everybody again, it's been too long.
Thank you.
Ooh, it's that same thing Kurt, but you had your screen off, camera off, so.
He's in his pajamas.
Alright, see you.
I uh, I haven't been able to get my hair cut, so.
Alright, well, take care, we'll see you, thank you.
Alright, thanks everybody.
Bye bye.
No, that was kinda long and I apologize, but this is a, it's a big expenditure, but it's also understand. And Jeff can explain, so too, he's learned a lot more about too, about the process. So basically, all three, really, the first four are all contingent upon getting E-rate funding, okay? But we could probably still do dark fiber if we want to, but the cost uh, is three hundred and, three fifty, I think, sorry. Three twenty, three twenty, and then seventy-four hundred dollars a month after from that point. Uh, E-rate we pay, if we got approved, E-rate we pay sixty percent of that. So the three twenties were upfront construction, this fiber is not there now. There is fiber in all forty they own, but all the fiber from forty to Kirkersville, Tasker, all that, all that has to be built. And they're building, they're putting in a hundred and forty-four strands of fiber. So that one terabyte was one fiber, we're putting in a hundred and forty-four. Not all buildings are getting a hundred and forty-four, but like, I think Etna Kirkersville getting like twenty-four each one, each way coming in. So the speed will be there, and they need to speak, because all the recording equipment will be at the four five or Etna. So the video cameras, the security, all that stuff's gotta run through that, those fiber lines. So they need that fiber, that kind of speed if we want to do this concept. If not, like you said, we have to put all the individual piece of equipment in every single building. So if we did decide to go this way, it's three twenty-five, then we pay our our forty, our forty percent, and they agreed to pay that over, split that over four years for. So we own about a hundred and eighty thousand, so basically, you know, fifty thousand a year or less than that. Um, for the construction part plus the monthly, um, lease, and that, that could, a monthly is basically for maintenance. If it breaks, they're coming to fix it, we don't have to worry about that. They have to repair it, they have to fix it, then make sure it's maintained. The way we're requesting was like a ten-year lease, there is a five-year lease option, but it's more expensive on the per month. It's eighty-four hundred per month, so it's a thousand dollars more if we want to go just a five-year lease. But I asked for what the price would be for ten-year, obviously it's cheaper, a thousand dollars more, but I, a less a month, but um. This is the concept, like I said, John brought to us way back in the beginning, just, I didn't think we could afford it based on its original estimates of three hundred thousand dollars. But the prices came in a lot better and it's something that wouldn't basically bring before the board. So uh, even if the board accepts it, there's still gonna be a challenge getting through E-rate. Just because I'm not sure how many fiber rings have been approved by E-rate passed, and then the strand count, the hundred forty-four is isn't a lot. And they may not even agree to fail, they would basically fund all the strand, they might only do half of it or something. So there's there's still a long ways to go past this point, if that's basically the board agrees to.
But half of that would still be like good, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, we could still, we could still do it, we could pay, we could either reduce it, or we could just pick up the other half, pay it as a district, that'd be our decision to make. But I think the concept is that that fiber ring is ours, it's dedicated, nobody else can use it, that's only ours. And the other thing is, the way it's throughout the district, once we build a new building, we'll be able to hook into the fiber. And that, so there's there's expandability into it, there's basically the ability that we need, if we add more in the future, we'll be able to do that. So um, obviously, there's a lot of information, I know this is the first time you heard it, um, I tried to get a little bit out ahead of time, that's why I wanted John to explain the concept of it and how it works. The lit part of the fiber is LACCA, so we still would, if we did this, we would still contract with LACCA for two one gigabyte connection, that's how we're starting out. One gigabyte coming in Etna, one gigabyte coming in a four five. You know, there may be in the future that we had to up that to a five or a ten gigabyte, gigabit connection. But the connections between the buildings is essentially gonna be blended to our black, but up to that one terabyte.
That's just current too, you know, the speeds affected it on fiber.
What's that?
What about the bus garage?
It's, we didn't do the bus garage because the cost of going over interstate seven E. So we are still having a lit connection to the bus garage.
To the bus garage, okay.
So LACCA. Yeah, so LACCA's proposal for with the fiber includes basically two one gig, yeah, twenty-five.
For the bus, okay.
This is probably most of the time, soon as we'll go up on poles. It's up to them to decide how they want to do it, but I think most of them will end up just going with poles. Cause I think basically there's a pole charge and like AEP charge, people aim stuff on the poles, not so far that what seventy-four hundred pays for too. You know, we, we originally, actually originally looked at doing a, basically, a network that we owned, at least. We never got, we didn't get any eBay red bits on that, so all they ever got eBay bits was if they own it, they serve property, they maintain it, but they'll build it for us. So um, the concepts need, and Jeff was excited about this ability, um, and the speeds, but again, it's comes down to the price, it's three hundred twenty-five thousand. Uh, and then seventy-four hundred a month, based on ten-year lease.
See, obviously, if we don't get the fiber, we need to go back to point-to-point connections, we have to put data closets and servers and camera systems and phone systems in each building like we have today.
And by separate air network connection, and then as we need to increase it, we have to increase those connections, which increases the cost. Like I said, the concept is that with the fiber ring, then we can put a ten gigabit connection in at forty, and you just change out the ends and we're up to a hundred gig, whatever the concept is. And it does cost to die more, we don't have to go back to LACCA and say we need more speed from you. That's how we can increase speeds between buildings without anybody else, is that correct, does that work?
That's exactly, there's trans, there's little transceiver pieces in each, you can replace those if you're about a hundred gigabit or a terabit or whatever you need to speak. I think I don't need all that expensive, you're looking at about forty to sixty dollars per transceiver.
So it's uh, the concepts need, um, again, we just got E-rate approved, we just went through the E-rate process. Uh, at the end of April, and we just kinda did like a due diligence until the end of May. I had to file E-rate by May thirteenth, and I did it with, you know, obviously, if the board doesn't do it, then we'll just, we don't, we just basically let it die in E-rate. But uh, this is the first official process, again, still no guarantee we'll get it unless, the only guarantee is if the board would decide to pay for it all yourself. That's the only guarantee that we'll be getting. The idea, if we get E-rate to help, that's helpful, so. I'm probably talking too much, I just wanted to make sure you understand, okay, thank you for agreeing, Dr. Perkins. This is a concept, I just wanted to make sure you understand the ideas, right, so I've been talking and basically.
Can we move item eight, A to F?
Second. That's good, Roger, that's perfect.
All I kept thinking was, I think they want us to go to the dark side.
Again, again, just real quick, there's two internet services for LACCA. One is if the fiber rings approved, and the other is if they not. So we're only gonna agree to one, but I wanted to get both approved, so that would, there's a discussion.
Correct, yep, you're good. I'm gonna ask that, any more discussion? Nope, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Fenseth?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, alright, that passes, but items nine, A?
You can do both at the same time.
At the same time, okay, alright, motion to approve items, not, items nine A and B?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
I'll try to make it a little faster, that was another important concept. Donations, we also, we always appreciate those, it's a five-year forecast. This one's May, uh, if you want to bring it up, basically, it looks quite a bit different than it did in, in November, and um. Leaving with some changes, uh, right now, so basically, we're projecting to be at twenty-two point four million dollars at the end of this count, just physically June thirtieth. Based on the five-year forecast, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, we're projected to be at nine million dollars. Part of it, a lot of it deals with basically the state reductions in our school foundation. You know, two, I did, the forecast now reflects the eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar reduction we got in the last three payments of the calendar year, fiscal year, which does give you no time to adjust. And then I am, based on a lot of feedback, I am projecting another eight hundred and twenty-six thousand or ten percent total reduction for next school year. I'm hoping that's not where it's gonna be at, but there's a lot of consensus feeling that's a good place to be. It could be worse, it could be fifteen, back in two thousand eight, it was a fifteen percent cut. At that time, though, we get federal money to make up the difference for a little bit, and then when the federal money went away, we lost fifteen percent, but eventually, we got a new formula. I am not sure how this works, our, the federal money we have right now is three hundred and sixty-six thousand for the CARES Act, and we lost eight hundred and fifty-six. So even though there's some politicians that put out there those three hundred million dollars of cuts, it's four hundred forty million dollars to CARES, it doesn't affect us, we lost half a million dollars.
But yet, some school districts have, some politics have been more than.
Yes, profited, let's use.
So um, going to lie by lie, but property taxes haven't made any significant change. Look back, looking back at two thousand eight through ten, twelve, there really wasn't a significant change in our property tax collection at the time. There was a little bit of dip, but not much, people kept paying the taxes, paying the taxes, a lot of it's escrowed, you're gonna get the money. The biggest issue was income tax, but it, but income tax was a one-year dip, in two thousand ten, we lost ten percent. Two thousand eleven, we gained seven percent, and then by twelve, another three percent, so we were back to where we were in two years. So I have, I have it in the forecast, and I I projected a five percent reduction next year in school fund, in our school income tax. But I'm having it coming right back up in two thousand twenty-two, a lot slower, I have like a one point eight percent increase two thousand twenty-two. And then two thousand twenty-three, up to about five percent, which is where we were running, you know, prior to this pandemic. There'll be timing on getting the payments because the income tax was delayed till July fifteenth, so. By still expecting the money that we usually get in July, I still expect to get it in October, just five percent less, but that's something we have to keep an eye on. And the other really big reduction is interest income, obviously, with the rates going through the floor. What's been recommended with a lot of treasures is basically we're cutting our expected interest income in half next year. We're getting about half a million dollars a year now, you know, cutting a half, and then the following year another quarter percent, and that kind of flatline, because that's basically where the rates are very low. I mean, you know, we have quite a few investments, but right now, we're buying investments at point three percent. For two years, a point five percent, and we're up above two percent. So there isn't much, and then on top of that, a declining balance gives us less money to invest. So between those two things, um, yeah, there is, so that's really the health of revenue. The expenditures, there weren't a ton of change in expenditures, personnel was the biggest one, and basically, the biggest one was I reduced the expected, the budget raises. I had two percent in there every year of the forecast, I dropped out of one percent, saved about three million dollars. Obviously, you have to negotiate to get to that one percent, but I'm not sure with the way we're looking right now, if we're gonna do it one percent. But we do, I do have one percent in there each of the next, you know, obviously, this year, two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four. There is another content that we've been working with, basically, with the unions, about doing a one-time payment versus a flat one percent based on increase. It actually saves the district quite a bit of money. Obviously, we'll talk about the specifics of it in our executive session, but it adds potential to save the half million dollars over the forecast. Basically, if we do a one-time payment versus a based on increase, that gets compounded every year, every year, and then basically, the new increase is on top of the old increase. So it does save us money doing a one-time payment, at least for one year to get a roll over. So that's the biggest change in personnel, um, and then purchase services, kinda looking back at, um, I did have to increase some. We are community school, open enrollment, and scholarship deductions have basically increased significantly this year. Scholarship alone has went up by about almost forty percent, and that was over four hundred thousand dollars in one year increase. So we've had a lot, that's kinda new, you know, it was zero community school, now, now scholarship is a huge, you know, but we're getting about basically six hundred thousand, almost seven hundred thousand a year taken out of our school foundation just for scholarships, for people to go other places. Community schools went up, open enrollments went up, so I've actually increased those to be more reflective of what things will happen this year, and I've built in a five percent increase for next remaining four years, three years of forecast. They've been increasing a little bit more than that, but I did five percent with hopefully with the, there if they go on the school foundation, that basically maybe we'll get some, some help there. So that's basically for the essence, you know, Dr. Perkins and I, I had some conversations about what we can do. I didn't affect, I didn't change any of the personnel numbers, but there's a chance that we may not need two of the five teachers we have budgeted. Obviously, it's hard to reduce personnel when you're a growing school.
Absolutely.
And then you do have to, you do have to, I guess, you know, we have to look at, hopefully, just doing personnel for growth, and maybe not all the programs, and if we're gonna land on cost neutral. But I did not affect the personnel whatsoever, but if we don't need it by the end of the year, that's gonna be two people, which definitely be a real help to the five-year forecast also. But there are five teachers in the five-year forecast every year, there's a couple aides, it's a bus driver. So we do have staff in there that if we don't need it, will help basically turn the forecast the other way. But, you know, starting next year, we're all negative spending, so we do eventually, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do something. Either basically make reductions and or have to put an envelope in the ballot in the future. Obviously, so much's up in here, I have no clue what's gonna happen to school foundation. I don't think Governor Ryan knows what's gonna happen to school foundation next year, but I will try to project, if I can forecast what's gonna happen. You know, this is basically a lot of input we receive from treasurer's calls, kinda like cases been happening with super tents, I've been having weapon arms with treasures, this is where we're all kinda playing our numbers at. But nobody knows, I I have no idea, I don't know what's gonna happen to our enrollment. That last time, I think it dipped some during the great recession, then it started to come back up again, I don't know if that's gonna happen again next year, or will we continue growing? That's, that's where I don't know, and then on top of that, we don't know what next four years will look like, you know? Or we're gonna have sports, we're gonna be in school five days a week, there's a lot of unknowns, even more than I would say in forecasts, there's a lot of unknowns in here. I just try to do the best we can, you know, obviously, this is not just mine, this is everybody's forecast, we try to do the best we can based on what we have at this time, it will change, there's no doubt it will change. But we do need to basically start looking at ways to be more cost effective if we can. You know, Casey has some good examples, things we can do possibly, especially with the department. Every department's gotta look at those ways we can do, and the other thing we've, we've talked about, we're gonna do, we're gonna go ahead and institute a ten percent budget cut this coming school year. For the ones that we can, obviously, you know, we still got my fuel, you know, we still got our best stuff, oil, tires. So, you know, where we can, we're trying to institute a ten percent budget cut to help, you know, student fees, we get that money, we're gonna spend a hundred percent on, we're not gonna have to cut that, because we charge to the parents, the teachers will be able to spend it. But hopefully, other areas, we can find some cut, some that will help. You know, we feel that they have the buildings, all have a sufficient budget, and they can withstand this cut and still be able to find what our students need and our teachers need in our buildings. If they don't, they come to Casey, to Dr. Perkins and I, and we can address it, we'll look at it, we'll do something if they need it. So, that is a five-year forecast, I asked the board to approve that, and I'll throw out a submission to OD before May thirty-first. Do you have any questions about it?
Short term, good.
Short term, we're fine, if it's long term, I'm willing to support it.
Good term. Okay, anybody? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziner?
Yes.
All right. Superintendent's items.
Point motion. Roger made a motion for A through F, we didn't do G, we'll be added.
You're right.
I just called that one, hey, we didn't do G.
So, so, yep.
I can add that on if everybody's agreeable, or we can do a separate one, whatever.
Yeah, do you want to, you want to add, on to Roger's motion? We can do that.
Roger made it, Deb second, if you're both are okay, now you have one through G.
Yes.
If you're amendable to that, we'll do A through.
A through G.
G. I want to talk about G real quick, if I can, I'll make it fast. Just came to us recently, basically, where the turn lanes are going on in our property, there's basically turn lane off forty in the property, and then the, basically, the up-to-speed lane, as you turn left on forty, obviously, that's our land, ODOT wants to buy the land from us. Basically, they're offering, basically, it's like point four acres, point four, six of it, and the value is about eight-five hundred dollars. They're asking if the board would consider donating them land to ODOT, and a little of them making a payment to us. They are saving us more than two million dollars by doing what they're doing, turning, they put these turn lanes in, stoplights for us. I personally don't have the issue with not donating this land for, because it is for our turn lanes, and pretty much, ODOT owns it, they'll take care of it from here on out. The turn lanes, everything else, so I guess that is basically, what we're asking is to approve this resolution and sign this donation, and I understand that we're finally donating that land to ODOT, so they're paying us eight-three-four. And if this shake your heads, or am I okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. Graduation, this weekend. We have three hundred and three kids in this class, we have two hundred and ninety-five members that are graduating, so we have eight that are not. Two hundred and seventy-seven are participating in the diplomas.
Okay.
So we have nineteen kids that are electing to pick theirs up. So I was really excited that the turnout for high school stuff, it's really hard to track down our families, so that is exciting. So Saturday will be the virtual graduation in the morning, followed by the diploma drop up on the buses, and then as of this afternoon, I don't even know if it's shared yet on social media, but we've been, I know there's been a lot of back and forth on social media about the parade, that was initially, the health department said no to the parade, but now we're having a parade, the health department has said yes. So the school, in cooperation with the city, in cooperation with the families, have collaborated on this parade. Now, it is being run, it's not being run by the school, it's a parent-run parade.
It's a farewell tour. Career tour. Career of the year.
Oh, sorry. It's a parade. But either way.
The official name is Farewell Tour.
I like that, that's nice.
I like that.
It's actually lovely, the farewell tour of our seniors on Sunday. So, no, we'll start at the high school, I have the route, I don't have it all familiar, I just go ahead, but they're going to be here at the high school lining up, and people will be in charge of that, and the health department has, Chad has been adamant about everyone stays in their cars. So that's the big thing he's most worried about, and I articulated that today to the mom, it's kind of running things, and that was also articulated in an email from him as well, and the city. So I think the parents will be excited about this, and this will be kind of a seniors' last row, and then Monday, they do have the ability, and I do believe a lot have signed up to come in and get their picture on the stage with Megan Beat, so that's exciting, too. So it's going to be a busy, fun-filled, fun-filled weekend, hopefully lots of sunshine, parade will all be gone. So that's kind of the update on graduation. A couple of things, you know, what's going on, I put COVID-19, which is our standard. So June one, the custodians will all be back, everybody will start their rotations of prepping and cleaning the buildings, the district office will open back up, obviously, the, everybody will be required in common spaces to wear masks. If you're, you know, on your own, you're a custodian, you're cleaning by yourself, you know, that's going to be hot, you don't have to do that. Same in, you know, individual offices at the district office. We, we will have a final, we had our student belonging pickup this week at the elementary, we collected a little over six hundred Chromebooks, we still have two hundred-ish, I don't know the exact numbers, but that's ballpark out there, so we're going to do one final push once we figure out the whoo-woo and the logistics and all that kind of stuff for the Chromebooks. And then the teachers are going to spend the last couple weeks kind of working on some split classrooms, you know, preparing for maybe a hybrid model. You know, right now, nobody knows what the fall's going to look like, so we'll start as a district team, kind of talking about three different levels, normal school, hybrid school, not coming back to school, and what that may look like. I'm sure you're reading everything that I'm reading, so a lot of what they're putting out right now, we talk about this weekly in our superintendent calls, you know, it's just not logistically possible, we can't even get kids to school transportation-wise based on what they say the buses should look like. So hopefully, some of that guidance changes over the course of the next few weeks. So right now, we're kind of at a holding pattern, we've all kind of agreed in the county that nobody's going to make a decision today, there's no rush to do that anyways, we don't have enough information, and we'll just keep meeting weekly and collaborating on that topic. And the last thing I wanted to share kind of about what's going on are the facility usage. So the governor, there's been a lot of back and forth and unclear guidance on facilities as well, because initially, we decided they were closed until June thirtieth. So now, they're saying that the facilities can be opened up, obviously, with certain parameters. So we're going to work as a team, and I talked to Mike today about, you know, not till June first, we have to have a plan, a very organized plan, a cleaning, and keeping kids apart, and following the rules, so that we're not, you know, shut down, which is kind of what Chad shared with us today, the health department on our call. So we will be opening the facilities up in some capacity June first, I don't know how far that will extend, I don't know if that will extend down to the youth, I don't know if that would just be for our, you know, the kids currently at the high school, we haven't, you know, I kind of want to collaborate, talk about it, and see how we can best serve as many kids as we can in a safe environment. So that's kind of where we're at, so the information just out today, Tuesday's the first day, they can have contact, there's just not, that's not enough time for us to put together a smart and effective plan, which we possibly need to.
First, the spring sports coaches can have contact.
Yes, correct, it's Tuesday. So I know they're shopping at the benches, they've been asking and emailing, and I, I do understand that, but we, we've got to have a good plan, we can't just open up the floodgates without some sort of, you know, how we're going to take care of things. So that's kind of, we have to end that, any questions about those two things? And then lastly, I put on here.
I had a question.
Oh, sure.
So as a part of this opening up, will we, will the team making the plan consider track usage for the community for walking and stuff?
Absolutely. That's probably the safest place, really, for people to be social distancing.
Well, I know there's several people that, in the community, that also run the course, like, during the day.
Okay.
I think they're still doing that, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, absolutely.
Can't lock up the woods.
I mean, if facilities are opening back up, the track will be opening back up to